Good evening and welcome to the April 3, 2024 City Council on Housing Authority Meeting. We'll call the meeting to order and I'll request the clerk read the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll start off with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Here.
Councilmember Albert, Councilmember Madonza.
Here.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Here.
And Mayor Haldeshaw.
And I am super excited to ask Daisy Troop, 3284, if you would all come up here, stand up, and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you kind of, yeah, it's cool. Somebody's got to get a photograph of that, right? All right, is everybody ready? Everybody facing this way? Wait, we've got one here. And then we'll turn around and get that perfect picture. Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now just stay right there and I'll turn around, okay? So your troop leaders and your parents can't, oh, wait, turn around, turn around.
You've got to go look at your family.
So your parents can get a picture with you and the council in the background, right? Brian Jacobson, where's your camera?
Okay.
All right. You got it? All right, thank you very much. That's such a treat. We should start. Will you come to every meeting? Okay. That is one of the best ways to start a meeting. All right, I'll ask the city clerk to read the meeting procedures.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table to your right or online on our city's website. All comments from the public should be directed to the City Council members and not to anyone in the audience or to any staff member. All speakers must speak from the podium as this meeting is being recorded. For comments on non-agendized items, members of the public may address the City Council regarding any item that is not listed on tonight's agenda. Public comments on non-agenda items will be limited to three minutes per speaker. The collective initial period for this section is 25 minutes. Any speaker that did not have the opportunity to address the City Council during this first segment will have an opportunity at the end of the meeting just prior to council comments. The Brown Act does prohibit our City Council from taking action, debating, and/or discussing items that are not listed on tonight's agenda. For comments that are listed on the agenda, speakers will have five minutes to provide input and should be relevant to the items that are listed on the agenda. Time will be monitored and once the red light begins to blink at the podium, we request that the speaker please conclude their comments. Lastly, if addressing the City Council tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. With that, we thank you in advance for your civic participation tonight and welcome to the City of Roseville.
All right, thanks very much. Nick, I see your hand, but we'll get to you in a minute. We've got a couple of presentations to do and we're going to start off with a proclamation and ask Councilwoman Rakuchi to make this proclamation for National Donate Life Month, April 2024. I think the T-shirts kind of give it away, right?
And I'll have you over here by the microphone because I want the people at home to hear about what you do and how you change lives for people.
Absolutely.
Okay, whereas more than 100,000 Americans and 20,000 Californians are currently on the national transplant waiting list, and whereas another person is added to the waiting list every eight minutes, and on the average, 17 people die each day while waiting for a life-saving organ transplant. And whereas Sierra Donor Services serves at the center of a dynamic interconnected system that involves donor families, local hospitals, and transplant centers across Northern California, including the greater Sacramento region, in the delicate and sensitive mission of saving lives through a transplant. In 2023, Sierra Donor Services had its most successful year in nearly its 40-year history, making 442 organ transplants possible, thanks to the selfless generosity of 171 Northern California organ donors. And whereas, organ transplants have directly impacted the life of Roseville residents, and I think all of you here are Roseville residents and somebody will be saying some things about that. You good? Okay. And several transplant recipients live in Roseville and continue to spread the importance of registering to become an organ eye or tissue donor. Now, therefore, Mayor Bruce Haldeshaw and the council of the City of Roseville do hereby proclaim April 2024 as National Donate Life Month and encourage all residents to register their decision to be an organ eye or tissue donor in the National Donate Life Registry with your local DMV. And actually, my sister-in-law's here, she's probably going to tell the story about her life, but as a registered nurse and have friends that had transplants and they didn't know, they weren't on a waiting month. They got sick, they were in a situation that they were life-threatening, and there was angel wings on them, and they are alive today because of the donors who have helped people. So thank you for being here. And I have, here is the proclamation, and if you'd like to say a few words and your team here, that's, you know, be my guest.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you, Councilwoman Rakuchi, mayor, the council. Just very briefly, I'm not going to take a lot of time because I'd rather have these two ladies say a quick, a few quick words, but on behalf of Sierra Donor Services and on behalf of myself and the group here that are residents of the City of Roseville, we appreciate your acknowledgement of this day. This is Donate Life Month. The work that we do for the community, not only in Placer County but also the greater Sacramento area, is really important to us. We have a very hard-working team that really, their purpose is to facilitate the, like Councilwoman Rakuchi explained, the organs or gifts from angels that are able to pass it on and help improve the lives of other people and save the lives of other people. And I have here a couple examples of how donation could really make a difference in people's lives. We have Lauren here, who is a kidney recipient, and Colleen, who's a double cornea recipient, that represents the variety, not only organs but tissue donations, and how they could actually benefit people and how they could improve quality of life in those folks. Would you guys care to say a couple words?
Thank you.
So I just have to say, before I asked Councilwoman Rakuchi to do this proclamation, I didn't know there was a relationship.
Same last name I do.
She does. All right, it's not on the agenda.
You never know who might need an organ or a piece of tissue to save their life or to enhance their life. I am Charlene Rakuchi, and 10 years ago, I had a disease, I had it for about 20 years, called Fuchs Disease, that causes your inner part of your cornea, the inner layer of the cornea to cloud. So I was able to receive tissue from two different donors. I had a surgery in 2014 to replace that inner tissue, and I had a surgery four months later in 2015 for my other eye. And before that, things were, life was very cloudy. It got to the point when I was driving that I could not read the street signs. I would have to get right up on them, read the sign, go around the block, and make another trip. Got to the point where I could no longer read, and this saved and totally enhanced my life. I'm 76 years old and I'm active at this point. I'm able to drive, and it would have been a different situation. I would have just gone totally blind had I not had these surgeries. And I'm forever grateful to the donors and the donor families that have allowed me to have this extra life. So that's why I support Give Life. I'm an ambassador for them and try to spread the word. So thank you so much for allowing us and for the proclamation. This is Lauren.
Well, good evening, and I'm very grateful that in 2024, that organ donation is now receiving a proclamation. For me, life began, I was, when both my kidneys decided to basically give out, I was about 12 years old. I was about as young as maybe some of the Girl Scouts that were here earlier when they started noticing I had health problems. But because my donor's living, but because of the fact that other people have stepped up, it's allowed me to become an individual, to be able to give back to this community. And I just am beyond grateful for the opportunity, and I hope that those at home, please go and register. This is not about me, because if it was about me, I'd still be on a dialysis machine. This is about humanity, and if you believe in the sanctity of life, please consider donating while you're still living, as well as you go on. But again, the fact that I was given an opportunity to have a kidney transplant, my first one was when I was 16, the second one was when I was 22 years of age. And those opportunities have opened doors to where I even, to this day, have a career and work right in Rockland. So we're giving back to the community when you sign up to be an organ donor. It's not just about the nation, but it's about here in Roseville.
Thank you.
Just in closing, I want to reiterate, there's 120,000 people on the waiting list, and you can make a difference by signing up on the Donate Life Registry or when you go to the DMV and renew your license to register to be an organ eye and tissue donor. It really does make a difference in people's lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Charlene.
Has Brede Luchil joined us? Hey, I was hoping that was you coming in the door. If you'll meet me at the podium.
How are you this evening?
Good, how are you?
Good. You know, this is really, City of Roseville is, let me move this over here a little bit. City of Roseville has the pro-housing designation, and you know, it seems appropriate that we are honoring Fair Housing Month. So let me just read this. Whereas adequate housing is a basic need and right of all people, and whereas this year we celebrate the 56th anniversary of the enactment of the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act, which states that discrimination in the sale and rental of housing is illegal when based on race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. And whereas the Fair Housing Amendments of, excuse me, 1988, extend fair housing rights on the basis of familial status to families with children, and on the basis of handicap to physical, to disabled persons. And whereas California statutes additionally protect citizens on the basis of age, marital status, sexual orientation, gender identity, and source of income. And California celebrates the 65th anniversary of the Fair Employment and Housing Act. Whereas the City of Roseville supports fair housing efforts to eliminate discrimination in housing and recognizes the benefits of Project Sentinel to educate home seekers, apartment managers, and apartment owners on federal and state housing laws, and to investigate complaints of illegal housing discrimination in Roseville. And whereas, to heighten public awareness, the City of Roseville wishes to focus public attention in April on, as April as Fair Housing Month. On behalf of the City Council, I do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Fair Housing Month and encourage all residents and community organizations to celebrate the value of harmonious, inclusive, diverse communities and neighbors, and to support the goal of equal housing opportunity for all people.
Beautiful room.
Yeah. Well, we've got to get a photograph. Daniel Beans, can we get a photograph? Can we get, with her phone?
Oh, yeah.
I just recruit, I just recruit, you know?
Thank you so much.
I don't know, I should have gotten her a new PIO.
Just drop him in the audience.
There you go. You have a few minutes?
Thank you. I wrote some stuff down, so I didn't forget. My name is Brianna Lucio. I'm the Senior Civil Rights Investigations Coordinator with Project Sentinel. I first just wanted to thank the city and the mayor of Roseville for their support with Project Sentinel in our fight against fair housing discrimination. The fair housing movement is implicated in the greater movement of the civil rights, and we recognize the importance of the civil rights movement in bringing forth fair housing protections today. Housing discrimination unfortunately is not a thing of the past, but requires our time and attention today in the midst of a very shocking housing crisis. Project Sentinel is committed to ending housing discrimination one case at a time. And to learn more about our services and advocacy work, please go to www.housing.org. And again, I appreciate your time in honoring Fair Housing Month. It's a real important issue, and we are very dedicated to making sure that everybody is afforded equal opportunity when it comes to housing. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us tonight. We value that as well, so. All right. We will now move to public comment on non-agenda items. We have a couple of folks who would like to speak on non-agenda items tonight. Kevin Cooper.
My name is Kevin Cooper. I live in Rockland. And for a large portion of my career, I was a forecaster for a very large set of numbers. And as I have watched the different COVID discussions happen across California, one thing's pretty clear, is there's a group of people that are getting their news from one area and maybe another group of people that are getting news from another area. And I want to make sure that the council is aware of the debate as it's changing, most notably in this article from the Wall Street Journal that was written by a guy, Nicholas Wade, who used to be the science editor for the Wall Street Journal. He's got some comments about where COVID came from. In addition to that, at some point, he probably shared this letter I wrote to the county and the different hospitals in the area. But there's an announcement that came from the Surgeon General of the state of Florida that he is no longer recommending the MNRA vaccine for his folks, along with a couple of articles, including one that's from the Insurance Industry Trade Magazine, that there's a considerable amount of deaths that no one seems to be able to understand. Now, I'm definitely not an MD. I have other degrees. And so really, all I'm up here to do is just bring this to you, ask you to circulate it, put it on the public record as something that somebody brought in, because I think that situation is changing faster than we all want to discuss. And I'm concerned, especially because I think that bad things might be coming. So I hope you guys will take this in the spirit it's offered, read it, check it out, and hopefully we'll sponsor some discussion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Next, Lauren Meeks-Harris would like to talk to us about, Lauren Meeks-Harris would like to talk to us.
Well, maybe I filled out the form incorrectly. Anyway, my name is Lauren Meeks-Harris. I live here in Roseville. And tonight, if you are looking for something to eat, Old Town Pizza is currently with, that's why the chamber probably would be a little more fuller. But quite a few of our members of the chamber are down there from now until like, I guess, 6:30 is happy hour. However, now until closing, they are, any proceeds that you buy, a salad or a pizza, will go toward Leadership Roseville's projects. We are working with the police. Yes, ARPAO, excuse me, and ME1, which is the cancer outreach. So if you have not made any dinner plans or anything, I know we're not supposed to give it a plug, however, Roseville is about growing people, and this goes toward the Leadership Roseville project.
Thank you. Those are all the cards I have. Does anybody else want to public comment on non-agenda items? All right. Well, then we'll move on to our consent calendar. I'll ask the clerk to read, announce the procedures for approving the consent calendar.
Thank you. So all matters on consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one motion of the City Council. There will be no discussion on consent calendar items unless a member of the City Council staff or a member of the public requests that a specific item be pulled for further discussion. Tonight's staff has requested that item 7.18 and 7.19 be removed and re-agendized to a future City Council meeting. Those items will not be discussed tonight. Is there any member of the public that would like to request an item be pulled for further discussion tonight? We see none, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the City Council will consider approving consent calendar items 7.1 through 7.17 and 7.20 through 7.32. May I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Madonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshaw.
Yes, thanks very much. All right, next, we're going to go to the public hearing portion of our agenda, and the first item is item 8.1, the electric utility rates, Roseville Municipal Code. I'm going to open the public hearing and invite our electric utility to find it.
And just prior to that, I want to make sure that the record reflects that item 8.1 will be heard as a public hearing tonight, and that the record will reflect that it was properly noticed in the newspaper as required by law.
All right, thank you very much. So we'll hear a presentation from our electric utility director and his team.
All right, thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilors. I'm Dan Beans, Director of Roseville Electric Utility. Tonight, we're coming to you with a rate proposal. A year ago, we brought a proposal for what we hoped would be a 23-month temporary energy surcharge to address the significant increase in the cost of natural gas and electricity on the wholesale market. Over the past year, however, it's become clear that prices, the price increases are here to stay. For seven years, Roseville Electric did not raise rates. In 2021, rate increases of 3% for 2022 and 2023 were approved, and then in 2022, the 8% temporary energy surcharge was approved. Today, we're asking for a 9% increase to be effective June 1, and another 9% January of next year. We are also asking that the 8% temporary energy surcharge become permanent. When we proposed the 8% energy surcharge, we did so in response to significant price increases in the market where natural gas doubled and tripled in costs in just a few months. We used the 8% surcharge revenue and in combination with cash reserves to balance our budget. Other strategies that we use to protect our customers from rate shock include hedging natural gas and energy to cover our customers' energy needs up to three years in advance. We also have an integrated resource plan that includes a public process to lay out long-term plan of how we will continue to provide affordable, reliable, and sustainable energy to Roseville while meeting the state of California's ever-increasing and constantly-changing mandates. The primary drivers of this rate proposal include the following. Power supply for our community makes up about 2/3 of our budget overall expenses. This includes natural gas, energy, and other related expenses. Natural gas costs, as I mentioned, have gone over 300% and are now kind of staying at around 200% compared to the prices before the 8% energy surcharge. Other cost pressures include labor, where the energy industry is highly competitive, and we compete in the same labor pool as our neighbors such as PJ and SLA. Another factor is the loss of $4.5 million of annual property lease revenue due to the expiration of an agreement with the California Department of Water Resources for the emergency generators. And also, we are facing increased equipment costs due to inflation. So even in the face of these cost pressures, the benefit of Roseville citizens owning their electric utility are clear. The proposed rates keep Roseville electric rates on par with smud. This includes the approved smud rate increases through 2025. The proposed rate increases keeps Roseville electric... The proposed rate increases keeps Roseville Electric approximately 50% of PG&E. And in a year, our customers save $230 million compared to PG&E rates. So not to mention, we have outstanding reliability, which is on the magnitude of 10 times better than PG&E. Because we are community-owned and not-for-profit, our commitments and obligations are to our customers, not shareholders. The City of Roseville is committed to transparency and communication and collaboration with the public as how business is done. To that end, Roseville Electric undertook an extensive outreach effort to inform customers and solicit feedback regarding the proposal, including, we held three customer workshops, two of them were virtual and one was in person. We met with Arcona, the Chamber of Commerce, and numerous large customer accounts. There have been several print and television segments covering the information as well. The rate proposal feedback was generally positive. There was some frustration, of course, with the increase, but people generally understood the reason and the need for the increases. And based on feedback, Roseville Electric is recommending increases in the benefits of the low-income program that will largely mitigate the impact for qualified low-income customers. Roseville Electric's service reliability was complimented throughout the outreach effort. So with that overview, I would like to introduce Assistant Electric Utility Director Eric Campbell and our Finance Manager Joanne Cucci, who will provide more specifics.
Thank you, Dan. Again, for the record, Eric Campbell, Roseville Electric. You're going to hear some repetition in terms of some of the things that Dan touched on in his opening statement. That's by design. These things are very important to us, and it's important that you understand what we're putting for you, before you, and the necessity for it. Just kind of build on some of the comments that Dan made. We go through a comprehensive cost-of-service analysis. We went through one late last year, and it forecasted a revenue shortfall. The expenses that we were expecting over the next two to three years were far outstripping revenues. So we did quite a bit of internal review, you know, trying to understand, you know, where these drivers are coming from, things that we can do internally to mitigate those. But we came to the conclusion that we really need to bring a proposed increase to you all. It's a last resort. We recognize our role as a community service provider, and we don't take it lightly. We've had, you know, previous increases approved, and we're bringing something to you now that's pretty significant. I think it's the largest increase that Roseville has ever, Roseville Electric's ever requested. Just in FY '25 alone, the next budget year, we've made some assumptions around this proposal being approved. It's a big number. It's about $30 million that's baked into the electric proposed budget for FY '25. Now, that budget's not approved. It has to go through all the appropriate review processes, but just to kind of give you some context of how important these increases are to us. Also, you know, we're not a reactive organization. We're proactive. We have a long-term focus. So I know we just came to you all with a increase last year for the surcharge, but this is really reflective of kind of the cost that we're seeing in the marketplace, and in particular with gas and power supply cost. Getting into the presentation, page one here. This is really our alignment with the City Council's strategic plan. Any action that we take within the utility, we make sure there's alignment with the plan, both the goal and the strategies. And really, this proposal will allow us to deliver on that mission that you see up there, to deliver safe, reliable electricity at competitive rates with exceptional service. You know, from the competitive rates perspective, you're going to see later in the presentation that we compare very favorably to the local utilities, more specifically SMUD and PG&E. And also looking at all of California, we're in the top two or three in terms of cost from a municipal perspective, so we're pretty proud of that. Next slide. This speaks to our rate policy alignment. So we have a City Council-approved rate policy. These are checks that we go through as we set rates. This first item here, the cost-based policy. Dan mentioned we're a public service provider. We don't build in any return in these rates. We don't try to overcollect. We don't try to undercollect. We really try to hit the mark, which is difficult in a marketplace as volatile as we're in. Next is with the adequacy policy, and this is really, you know, a balanced budget. You know, do these proposed increases balance our budget? And they do, as I mentioned earlier. Next, fair and equity policy. This is where we want to make sure there's no cross-subsidization. We don't want residential customers subsidized and commercial customers, or vice versa. So we go through that, part of the cost-of-service study ensures that that's not happening. Lastly, stability policy. We prefer incremental rate increases, smaller incremental rate increases. This is not in alignment with that. This is really being necessitated by the current financial situation with the utility. We're really facing a financial situation in the next 12 to 18 months without new revenue that could result in downgrades of our credit rating, our debt service covenants being triggered. The importance of the debt service covenants being triggered is, at that point in time, all of our bondholders, they can redeem their debt. You know, so basically, any outstanding debt we have becomes due. And we really don't want to go down that path. And then on top of that, if we do, you know, see a ratings downgrade, that's going to impact our ability to procure energy, to procure natural gas, power supply, and it's going to impact the community as well. Next, Dan mentioned the proposed rate actions. And I just, I wanted to stress, and I've mentioned it before, that in FY '25, it's about $29 million, the impact of these proposed increases. And it's really, at this point, a necessity. Obviously, it's up to you all to make a judgment on that. And like I mentioned earlier, the debt service covenant is a huge concern for us. Once we breach that, it really puts us in a bad position with respect to our bondholders. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Joanne Cucci.
Good evening. This, these next couple of slides are looking at some of the numbers behind this proposal. The current slide shows what our five-year financial forecast looks like without the proposed rate increases. As you can see, our bottom line net cash flow turns negative starting in FY '25, and that's that $30 million that Eric mentioned that the rate increase would bring in. So currently, the revenue line includes the surcharge, the already-approved surcharge through December of '24, and then it rolls off. That's why you see the revenue decrease, because an extension of that is not yet approved. The biggest thing to look at here is in the power supply expense line, between FY '24 and FY '28, we're looking at a 27% increase in that power supply cost. If you just roll back one year to FY '23, because we've already seen some of this increase, if you go from FY '20, sorry, FY '24 to FY '28, we're looking, or FY '23 to FY '28, it's a 42% increase in that power supply expense. So we, we've already realized some of that, which is when we put the surcharge in, but there's continuing to be increasing expenses as we look at the out-years. This forecast has some general assumptions around materials, supplies, and services, and growth due to inflation and things like that, but largely, we're looking at that power expense line and the capital line as things that we need to operate the utility. This next slide shows that same five-year financial forecast, but this is with the proposed rate increases. As you see, that bottom line improved substantially. We're looking at a net cash flow in FY '25 as positive, as well as FY '26. We do go slightly negative in FY '27. We feel like that's pretty reasonable right now, but we would be hoping to get that to be a positive number by the time we get there. And we are hoping that this rate action holds us through at minimum FY '26 before we come back for additional rate increases.
And if I can add there, looking out over the next three years, we have a pretty good handle on what costs are going to look like. Dan mentioned the power supply hedging program. We're locking in a lot of our costs now for the next three years. Beyond that, labor agreements, labor agreements cover the same period as well, so we have cost certainty there. So those are really the two biggest drivers. I think those two are 80% of our overall budget. So we have a lot of certainty and comfort with this particular forecast.
So moving on, this slide looks at the average customer impact of each of these rate increases. So looking at the residential class, a current residential customer is paying, on average, per month, about $130. So that's across the year, so summer months are more, generally winter months are less. So going from an average $130 per year, as of June 1, they would be paying $142. And as of January 1, 2025, they would be paying $154. So this is an overall increase of $24 for the residential customer class. Next up is small commercial. This is businesses like coffee shops and salons, some of our smallest businesses. Currently, the average customer in this class pays about $178 per month. After June 1, that would be $195, and then after January 1, 2025, $212, for a total increase of $34 per month. Moving into the medium commercial class, this is, for example, things like grocery stores, gyms, drugstores. Currently, the average customer bill for this class is $34.71. As of June 1, it'd be $37.83, and then January 1, $41.23, for an average monthly increase of $652 per customer. Moving into the large commercial, this is things like large, big-box stores. Some of our high schools fall under this class. The average customer bill in this class is $33.950. As of June 1, $37,000, and then as of January 1, $40,336. And that's an average increase of about $6,400 per month for the large commercial class. And then last is our industrial class. This is large EV charging stations, manufacturing, our wastewater treatment plants. Currently, the average monthly bill for this class, on average, is $115,000, going to $126,000, and then $137,000 for an average monthly increase of $21,750. This slide looks at what these new rates as proposed are in comparison to neighboring utilities. Compared to PG&E, we range from between 46% and 56% lower than PG&E for all classes. This is also assuming that PG&E does not raise their rates any time over the next two years. Rather unlikely, but that's the information we had to compare against. Looking at SMUD, this comparison does include their next couple of rate increases. They have approved rate increases out until May of '25. And so we are comparing these proposed rate actions for Roseville against SMUD's final rate action that they have approved. So looking at that, we are about $1 more expensive in the residential class than SMUD. And in the commercial class, we're $6 cheaper, so we kind of bounce back and forth depending on the class. Generally, we range from 7% cheaper to 1% higher, depending on the customer class. We do like to point out that as Roseville Electric customers, our community saves more than $230 million per year compared to if they were paying their PG&E bill, a comparable PG&E bill. And that $230 million is money that stays in the community, and it's available for our customers to spend on other things besides their energy bill. So why is the rate increase needed? As Dan and Eric mentioned, we are having persistently high power supply costs. We have been facing that for a couple years now. We were really hoping that they would come down and that it was a temporary action. They did come down a little, but nowhere near where they were before around 2020. In addition, natural gas is more and more subject to global energy prices. After the conflict in Ukraine started, the export of natural gas increased exponentially. Natural gas exports rose by 30% between 2022 and 2024, and then it's expected to double again by 2028. So kind of for the first time, a lot of our natural gas supply in the United States is subject to some global market forces, and other countries do pay higher prices for natural gas, so it does make sense for producers of natural gas to export. So that just pushes up the cost of natural gas in the United States. As mentioned, we did have some lease revenue coming from California Department of Water Resources for the placement of two turbines out at the RUP. That was about $4.5 million a year. That agreement has expired, and so we will no longer have that money going forward, and that did help offset some of our costs, and we will need to make that up. Equipment costs have increased substantially. This is due to supply chain issues and inflation. We're seeing both of those things function as we see increased costs. We've seen transformers and other distribution equipment increase from 50% to over 300% in price. So all of that ends up baked into our need for this rate increase. As part of the surcharge, we did pay off a large chunk of variable rate debt that was coming due for reevaluation. If we hadn't have paid that off, it would have increased our interest rate on that debt. So we did go ahead and pay that off when it came up for reevaluation. However, we did reduce our balance in the rate stabilization fund when we did that, and so about 1/2% of this rate increase is planned to rebuild the balance in the rate stabilization fund going forward.
And real quick, that 1/2% is about $700,000. So it's not a huge number, but it will help us, you know, put us on a path to replenish that fund.
And finally, the labor market. We are seeing general increases in the labor market, and we do compete against SMUD and PG&E and other utilities for some of our highly-technical staff. These next two slides are looking at the forward price of power and gas and what we've seen in the market. So this slide is the forward price of power. This is looking out 36 months for every data point, because we can purchase power in our hedge window forward 36 months. So as you can see, if you look around mid-2020, we were slightly floating around 35, under 40. And then as we were kind of wrapping up 2023, we were close to $80 per megawatt hour. So this is prices that we have to recover in order to purchase power for our customers and supply it. The next slide is looking at natural gas prices. Now, these markets are tied together. There are a couple of things on the natural gas side that I wanted to point out. So we are seeing an increase in natural gas prices, but more than that, we are seeing a lot of volatility. Looking at the prices for gas, comparing a summer of 2019 to the summer of 2027, which is kind of our window that we're looking at, the summer gas prices increased about 96%. But it's even more volatile on the winter side, which is kind of a new thing we're seeing. So in winter, in January of 2020, we were paying about $2.64 per MMBTU for gas. And in January of 2028, we're looking at $6.39, which is 142% increase. So we're definitely seeing more volatility in the winter months, which is kind of a new thing for the utility to deal with. This slide looks at the way our costs occur in the utility. So our power supply and generation costs come out to about 55% of our total costs, and that's about $113.5 million per year. Following up on that is our administration and customer service costs. This is all of our call center billing, metering, all of those kind of costs, in addition to our administrative staff, and that comes out to about $27.9 million, or 14%. Next up is our distribution staff. That comes out as $25.4 million and 12%. In our plan, the next largest chunk is our capital plan. This is to improve, expand, and maintain our distribution system largely, and then our generation fleet. So between those two pieces of our system, we're spending about 10% or $19.7 million on capital improvements. Transfers to the city is 6% or $11.8 million, and this is the franchise fee and internal service fund transfers and indirect costs. So kind of all of the money that gets transferred for services, the department receives from the city, as well as the franchise fee that goes to fund parks, recreation, police, and libraries. And then finally, our debt service, it's actually reduced since we did pay off a large chunk of debt last year. It's $7.1 million, or 3%. And just as a side note, our labor is only about 22% of the entire budget, so for a government department, that's a pretty small percentage that goes to labor, and that's So as Dan and Eric mentioned, we have taken a lot of steps to try to mitigate this cost increase. We try to optimize our portfolio with our three-year hedging program, so when it's possible, well, we're required to buy power out in the first year and then different percentages in each year going forward. This allows us to lock in power prices and have certainty in the forecast period. We do participate in off-peak system capacity sales. This allows us to recoup costs on some of our generation assets. When we're not using them, we can sell off the capacity to others who need that capacity, and that comes in as a revenue to the utility. Energy market pricing and outage management synchronization, this is making sure that when we are taking our plant offline for maintenance, it's during a time of low cost to buy power in the market to replace it. We're not going to take it off on July 15, when it's 103. We're going to look in March, you know, when it's less used and more affordable to take that plant offline. Adopting technology where feasible to reduce expenses. We are wrapping up the smart meter AMI rollout, and that is a way to We are wrapping up the smart meter AMI rollout, and that is a way to reduce labor costs when it comes to meter reading and anything along those lines. We do look into adopting technology where we can and where it makes sense financially to adopt it. And then finally, we are holding staffing level steady. We have not added any new positions to the electric utility in three years now, I believe, and we continue to try to keep that, hold that line. We do look at every position that comes available. It's often reviewed or redeployed in a different group or a different department or moved to its highest and best use. So we aren't just having vacancies and refilling them. We're really analyzing each one and moving it where it can be most used. So what happens if the rate increase is not improved? I believe we've gone mostly over this slide, but I'll go through it rather quickly. We would see a degradation of service reliability. This is largely due to reduced investment in the distribution system. A lot of our spending is on capital, which is maintenance and expansion of the distribution system, and reliability is one of our highlights of our organization. So we would have to reduce how much we invest in the distribution system if we did not get the rate increase, and so that would reduce our reliability. Eric mentioned significant erosion of our financial metrics. We do have a requirement for the number of days cash on hand, and there's a certain level of that and debt service coverage ratio where it will impact our credit rating, which will turn into difficulties in procuring energy in the future.
Okay, next. Dan mentioned earlier that we made some adjustments in our rate assistance programs. We actually increased the discount for our income-qualified customers. It went from fifteen percent to twenty percent. That particular action, that was based on feedback we got during outreach. It's something that, it's very meaningful to those customers. It's a small amount for us to increase that discount rate. But again, we took the feedback from our customers or an outreach and made that adjustment to this proposal. The next bullet point here is we're also proposing a new permanent fifteen-dollar reduction. That's to the base charge. This is another way that we're, you know, targeting that group that's having more difficulties with paying bills, low income, et cetera. We're also extending the program renewal interval to three years. Currently, it's two years where customers have to come and re-enroll. We think it's going to, you know, increase participation by adding that additional year to the program. And then lastly here, we're trying to be more flexible on the different kind of documents that we see for income validation. Next, community outreach. We undertook an extensive outreach process that began in January. The heart of it was, I would say, through the month of January and maybe half of February. There's been a lot of one-off calls, you know, other outreach that has occurred. Dan mentioned some of the workshops, and I wanted to highlight the last workshop that we had on February eighth, the in-person workshop. It was well-attended. It was planned for an hour. It actually went on for two hours and fifteen minutes. So it was a pretty robust discussion. There was a former employee there who knew the organization and was asking some very targeted and educated questions, and so we thought it really benefited the entire group that was there during that session. Some of the feedback themes, and again, you know, Dan touched on some of these. I was generally positive overall. Nobody likes an increase, but the folks, the customers, you know, understood. They understood that the pressures we're under with respect to natural gas and power supply. Lot of compliments on service reliability, but that's something that we've come to appreciate. Lot of interest in natural gas and power supply, you know, trying to understand like what's driving this. Is it state policy? Is it federal policy? You know, and it's all of those things, right? You know, everything's kind of converged to really kind of create this situation with respect to natural gas. And then lastly, there were some questions about our integrated resource plan, you know, what's our plan for the future? We go through an extensive planning process with the IRP, the Integrated Resource Plan. There's outreach, there's workshops that we go through, and we encourage those folks to look for those workshops in the future. One more thing that came up during these discussions was our solar buyback rate. Folks inquired whether or not we were going to adjust that as well. We are looking at making adjustments to that. We're planning a workshop later this month. The date's yet to be determined. We're going to take the proposed adjustment to the Roseville Public Utility Commission at the end of the month, and we'll bring it before this commission, I think in May, for both the first and second reading. The new rate will go into effect at the beginning of July. And then we also brought this proposal to the Public Utility Commission back on February twenty-seventh, and they did recommend approval of it, so I wanted to share that with you. And then lastly here, and most important, is the actual recommendation. Staff recommends that city council introduce the first reading of the two nine percent increases on June first, 2024, and January first, 2025, and include the current eight percent surcharge as a permanent increase to base rates beginning January one of 2025. And so with that, we'll open it up to questions.
All right. Questions?
No, comments, not questions.
Question?
I have comments. I'll save them.
Yeah, so I do have a couple of questions. One, thanks to your staff for answering questions in advance and including them in this presentation. Joanne, you mentioned off-peak system capacity sales and utilization of that asset. Can you go into a little bit more? Is there an example of where that's happened?
Yeah, so certain times of year, we aren't using or generating assets, whether they're in Roseville or in the, in NCPA, which is kind of the Cal ISO territory. If we're not using some of the assets, there's a market in California for capacity. We don't even have to necessarily run the units. Just having the available capacity is something that you can sell, and there's a market for that. And so in times where we're not using some of our generation, we are able to just sell the capacity, not run the plants or anything, but other organizations need to have like a margin of capacity above their usage, and they're willing to pay for that. And so we can sell off that piece and make revenue.
Yeah, and you mentioned a loss of revenue from the DWR generators. Are those the assets that we can then employ to generate?
So, yeah.
Capacity that we can put into the marketplace?
So we did lose the lease, which was for the land. So they were paying us to place the units on the land itself as part of an agreement that was recently made with DWR. The hope is that we take ownership of those units, so it is a financial benefit to the city. However, we won't be getting that lease for the land because we would own them at that point.
Okay.
So there is potential. There is potential for capacity sales, as we discussed earlier, with those particular assets.
An asset we own, right? And then we can generate power, and the marketplace needs it, they come to us.
Yes.
Okay. Variable rate loan. We're not the only city. Public Utility Commission, Public Utility experiences this in the state, are we?
No, there's several, and many have had magnitudes of thirty to fifty percent rate increases.
Right. Yeah, I saw what's happening in the Northwest where the temperature's colder. I think what, to me, is always, you know, we think of electricity, but in order to generate electricity, we need natural gas. Is there any, you know, the December 2022 spike wasn't in the forecast, the financial models, you know? Can we ever see in the horizon a return to more normal rates?
Candidly, I mean, we could see natural gas come back, but we really see the cost of renewables impacting us in the future once you get into the out-years, and that's really kind of a yet-determined risk to the city. So it's more of a trade-out of risk, you know, going to renewable exposure versus the current natural gas exposure.
But you could fix this right now if you increase production of natural gas in the U.S. We have a ton of it, and we're exporting a ton of it, which is creating that supply-demand issue, creating cost pressures. But there's plenty of gas in the ground here in America. We just need to get it out of the ground and take advantage of it.
Thank you. We are going to, you know, a carbon-neutral environment, right, which has costs. Lastly, your recommendation is a nine percent increase in June first, 2024?
Mm-hmm.
And then again, a nine percent increase, yeah, oh, yeah, in January 2025?
That's correct.
Why not June of 2025? Why not, yeah, I mean, we're, why aren't we looking at, you know, why aren't we extending that out?
It's really a byproduct of the situation we find ourselves in. Without the additional revenue, the two increases that are spaced approximately six months apart, it really creates a situation where we could breach our financial metrics, and in particular, the debt covenant that I mentioned earlier. If we breach, again, if we breach the debt covenant, excuse me, we could really set ourselves up for a very difficult situation. At that point in time, bondholders can redeem their debts. We'd have to pay them. It would essentially drain all of our cash reserves.
And then our rates go up.
And then our rates go up, and it becomes much more difficult to procure energy and gas in the future.
And is our bond rating double-A?
Double-A.
Okay. And how do we compare with PG&E?
I believe PG&E is triple-B. It's very close to junk status, maybe two levels above junk status. SMUD, we're very comparable.
And there's an aggregator called Pioneer that delivers energy. How do we compare with that?
I don't know their rating, but I think their rates are roughly six percent difference versus ours, so very comparable.
Well, I think.
They're six percent lower than PG&E's rate, so they're forty percent higher than us.
Yeah, that's the difference.
All right, I'll reserve my comments for the comment portion, and I'll open the public hearing to anybody who wants to open public comment. I'll close public comment and close the public hearing and ask the council for their comments. Go ahead, Councilmember Albert.
I know rate increases are the hardest thing, I think, sometimes to vote on because it hits all of us as well. I mean, we're definitely going to feel this one, and our community's going to feel this one, and our businesses are going to feel this one. It's a relief, it's kind of a weird thing to say, but it's a relief knowing we're, we have one of the best rates still, and people are getting hit harder. I don't know how that's a total relief, but I'm glad I live in Roseville right now because I see what's happening other places. It's unfortunate that, from my perspective, that we're one percent under SMUD because it's always been nice to be above that. We have reliability, though, that outshines everybody. But I do appreciate the industrial is cheaper because we're in the process of trying to attract some big businesses to our city, and we're hoping that they view that as something that's attractive to them as well, besides our reliability. So, yeah, I know we're going to get heat on this, but I think the logic lays out that we don't really have a choice, otherwise we're just going to really be in trouble in the future. So I appreciate what you guys have done to try to keep them down as much as we can.
Vice Mayor Bernuscony.
I would just say that this is an illustration of times on the council where we have to take difficult votes. By law, we're not allowed to charge more than or less than the cost of the delivery of service. I commend you all on your outreach. You have been very communicative with us as council members and the public and our business partners, and we will all feel this. Doesn't mean that we're not thankful for the service, but it's just a reality that we're in, and as much as we don't want to do it, I do support what we're doing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Rakucci.
Yeah, thank you for the very thorough presentation and the outreach that you made to the community. It's unfortunate that the inflation and the cost of natural gas and our power supply is out of sight. There's, I think, many of the things, excuse me, that you attempt to remedy, like having the generators in place and working with DWR was very commendable. I think City of Roseville and our Roseville Electric, we're pretty financially stable and try to maintain that. It's one of our goals, major goals for the City of Roseville, but it's hard to have the financial stability in an unstable, you know, state and national level when other things around us are making changes that make life difficult for the average citizen anywhere.
Councilmember Mendanza.
I won't repeat what several of my other council members have said. I agree with all of it, but I think one thing that's important to note, and I know you slightly touched on it, but I think it deserves a little more emphasis, is the reliability. I think a lot of people choose Roseville. All of us have heard stories. We've met businesses that come here specifically for that reliability. And since COVID, you know, many people have transferred or switched to a hybrid model where they work from home a few days a week or a hundred percent at home. And a lot of people, I think, take for granted the reliability that we have over other cities, you know, that are just a few miles away from here on either side. With so many different things and devices and things that we rely on every day in our homes, I think the reliability, yes, this rate increase sucks, and I don't think any of us want to be in this position. And I'm not a fan of rate increases at any level, but in this particular case, I think that why we're doing it, and at the end of the day, the reliability, our residents expect it. As elected members to represent our community, we're expected to serve their needs and represent them, and I think that if we didn't move things forward to deliver that reliability and do it responsibly, we'd be doing a disservice, you know, as representatives to them. So I commend you for bringing this forward. It's not a popular subject, but I do appreciate all the work you've done, the community, and I just think that from the reliability aspect of this, it's important because I think that's really a big deal for our city and for our residents and for our businesses to have that reliability. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I think, I'm going to speak for all of our council. I think we all have had constituent inquiries, emails, variety of things, so thank you for being there to answer all those, especially with the solar offset, right? I know I heard that. You know, we're a victim here. I'm going to say we're a victim of policies that are driving us to this, and I think what you've done is you have mitigated mandates from outside of our jurisdiction in the best interest of our businesses. You've looked everywhere for areas for opportunity, for savings, without, I mean, if our bond rating changes, that actually costs folks more. For us not to be in the marketplace and not to be considered in the marketplace, that costs our businesses and our residents more. So thank you for your diligence. This is not easy. No, this is atypical, right, for a long time. You know, water, wastewater would always come with a, you know, a rate increase or a rate study, and this is a sign of the times that are not in our full control. Otherwise, I don't think we'd probably have these rate increases. So thank you very much for your diligence and your compassion for our business community and our citizens. And with that, I'll have the clerk read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item eight point one, the city council will consider introducing for a first reading an ordinance amending sections fourteen-point-twenty-four-point-oh-forty, fourteen-point-twenty-four-point-oh-fifty, fourteen-point-twenty-four-point-oh-five-one, fourteen-point-twenty-four-point-oh-five-five, fourteen-point-twenty-four-point-oh-seven-seven, and fourteen-point-twenty-four-oh-seven-nine of chapter fourteen-point-twenty-four of title fourteen of the Roseville Municipal Code Regarding Electrical Energy. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve?
Sound moved.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our call with Vice Mayor Bernuscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert, councilmember Mendanza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then definitely thank you for all that outreach in the community. Our next public hearing is a zoning ordinance for North Central Specific Plan text amendment, regional commercial, and I see a new name here, an associate planner named Eric Singer. Somebody want to introduce him? I think this is his first time.
Stole my thunder, Mr. Mayor.
What's that?
I said you stole my thunder. With me is Mike Ismer, Development Services Director, Lauren Hawker, Senior Planner, and Eric Singer is indeed new. This is his council debut and associate planner in our department.
We've got questions for him then.
He's going to be giving a presentation this evening, so I'll turn it over to Eric.
Thank you, Mike. It's a great start to my first presentation. Thank you, Mayor Haldeshel, and council members. Tonight.
That's a great start. You got the name right, okay?
I do my best. So tonight, we're going to be discussing the proposed text amendments to the zoning ordinance as well as the North Central Specific Plan, or sorry, North Central Roseville Specific Proposed changes include a city-initiated update to section nineteen dot one, two dot oh-two of the zoning ordinance. It's to allow multifamily residential uses as a permitted use within the regional commercial zone district. It's provided that the specific plan also allows for those multifamily uses. So the second part of the project is to update section three-point-eight of the North Central Roseville Specific Plan to allow multifamily residential uses within the regional commercial core area, and that's the area highlighted there on the map. As it stands currently, multifamily uses are not allowed within As it stands currently, multifamily uses are not allowed within the regional commercial zone. So, the proposed zoning ordinance amendment would add them as a permitted use to the table. There would be a footnote specifying that units would only be allowed if they're also allowed and allocated again within the specific plan. Basically means that any new residential development would require a further specific plan amendment. There are currently only a few locations in the city that are zone regional commercial. So, as the previous slide showed, at the Westfield Galleria, Creekside Town Center, those are both part of the North Central Roseville Specific Plan. We'll be discussing on the next slide the proposal to amend the specific plan to allow residential units, but we're not proposing to allocate any units at this time. The only other parcels in the city that are zone regional commercial are the auto mall and adjacent parcels around there. Those parcels are not within the North Central Roseville Specific Plan. The specific plan that they're in does not allow for any multifamily residential on those properties, so we won't be discussing those at this time. Additionally, there was mention in staff report that we're proposing to address a cleanup item from the 2023 zoning ordinance update. That was included as table note 14. So, the amendment to the North Central Roseville Specific Plan adds language that includes multifamily residential as an allowed use on the regional commercial core parcels. So, as previously mentioned, the Galleria and Creekside parcels. Although no housing is currently proposed at those sites, adding these uses has the potential to fulfill the city's regional housing needs allocation, or RENA. This action could earn RENA credit by removing a potential land use barrier for future housing development. It's similar to when we adopted the commercial corridor specific plans. We earned some RENA credit through streamlining approval of multifamily residential on commercial properties. In addition, when consulting with the mall ownership group, another consideration is the ability for the regional commercial core parcels to just have greater flexibility in planning out future investment. A recent analysis by JLL, which is a global real estate services company, showed that in over half, 54% of recent mall projects across the U.S., housing was included as a new use. This would just be another tool for mall ownership to use to help stay ahead of retail market trends. In terms of outreach, early notification of the project was posted on the Roseville Coalition and Neighborhood Association's website. We also presented the proposed amendments to the Arcona Board Meeting on January 18th of this year, and notices for the Planning Commission hearing as well as this meeting were published in the Roseville Press Tribune and posted on the Arcona website. The project was considered by the city's Planning Commission on February 8th of this year. A commissioner asked at the time what type of housing might be approved, whether that be affordable, a market rate. Staff responded that the developer would determine the type of housing project, but the city's 10% affordable housing requirement would need to be met. An additional question was regarding building height restrictions. Staff responded that the typical height is 50 feet, but if necessary, could go higher through the major project permit process. Ultimately, the Planning Commission recommended the city council approve the specific plan amendment and zoning ordinance amendment, and no public testimony was received. So, in conclusion, these are staff's recommended actions, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have on the topic. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Yeah, I had a question. I was just thinking, you know, they're talking about the Galleria, and I was thinking, and you had a slide that showed kind of where things would be. I was just wondering how, and I know a project would have to come forward, but how do you know, or how much or where things would be? I'm thinking, maybe because I'm just thinking of the Galleria right now, and even some of the buildings that are not the main part, but they're on the, you know, outside. Where would they put houses or apartments?
The mall has a lot of surface parking, and they've decreased the amount of surface parking they've had over the years by building parking garages in order to increase the square footage of the mall. So, that's one option. They could build on some of those surface parking areas and build additional parking decks. But if you look to the former Sears Building, that was redeveloped as to completely new uses, you know, the Round One Entertainment and the movie theater. So, the mall, our mall and all malls in particular, are constantly undergoing renewal. They'll tear something down to put something up, and that's just kind of the way they operate. So, those are two ideas.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nice job, Eric.
Thank you.
All right, we'll open for public comment, and we'll close public comment and close the public hearing. Are there any other questions from the council or comments? Ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 9.1, the City Council will consider adopting the two findings of fact and introducing for your first reading an ordinance amending zoning ordinance section 19.12.020 of title 19 of the Roseville Municipal Code Regarding Commercial Use Types and Adopting Resolution Number 24-088, amending the North Central Roseville Specific Plan Regarding Permitted Uses on Parcels 35, 36, and 95. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve?
Sound moved.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Thank you. We'll start our call with Vice Mayor Bernuscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert, Councilmember Mendonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshel.
Eric, you are as advertised. Very nice presentation. Next, we're going to have a public hearing on Sierra Vista Specific Land Parcels FD-34 and WB-31, 1600 Westbrook Boulevard, 3250 Pleasant Grove Boulevard Development Agreement Amendments, and we'll have a staff presentation.
And Derek Ogden and Kenny Shallow are joining me on this one. Kenny's going to give the presentation.
Just for clarification, I opened the public hearing, right? I want to make sure I opened the public hearing.
I heard you opened the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Kenny Shallow. I'm here to present two development agreement amendments that cover Sierra Vista Specific Plan Parcels FD-34 and WB-31. Two subject parcels are vacant and have a zoning designation of multifamily residential, or R3, and a land use designation of high-density residential. Parcel FD-34 is allocated 256 units, with 100% of those units designated for very low-income households. And WB-31 is allocated 293 units, with six units designated for low-income households. At the time of specific plan adoption, FD-34 was designated as a public quasi-public parcel, but in 2017, the city council approved a specific plan amendment to change it to the current HDR designation with a unit allocation of 172 units and a density of 24 units per acre. In August 2023, an 84-unit density bonus was granted to FD-34 pursuant to state density bonus law, resulting in the 256-unit allocation. The developer is able to achieve this level of density on FD-34 because it will be senior housing for ages 55 years and older, which typically has smaller units and less parking requirements than a typical multifamily project. The request before you tonight is a Seventh Amendment to the West Park Federico DA, which covers FD-34, and a Fourth Amendment to the Westbrook DA, which covers WB-31. No physical development will occur with this application. The DAs will be amended to reflect an additional 48-unit density bonus for FD-34 and the transfer of the six low-income unit obligation from WB-31 to FD-34. Typically, density bonuses do not require DA amendments, but in this case, they were required to document the transfer of the affordable housing obligations. The resulting unit allocations will be 304 units on FD-34, with 256 very-low and 46 low-income units, and 293 market-rate units on WB-31. The city's Housing Division determined the proposed affordable unit obligations are acceptable and consistent with city policy. Early notification on the project was posted on the Arcona website, and notices of the Planning Commission and council meetings were published in the Press Tribune, sent to a 300-foot radius, and posted on the Arcona website. And since publication of the city council notice, staff has received some inquiries from nearby residents requesting clarification on the project request. In addition, one comment letter was received from a resident who identified concerns with the increase in the number of units on FD-34. And the city clerk had made this letter available to the council. The project was considered by the city's Planning Commission on March 14th of this year, and the Planning Commission recommended the city council approve the DA amendments, and no public testimony was received. In conclusion, the project is consistent with the goals, policies, and standards of the zoning ordinance, Sierra Vista Specific Plan, and the general plan, and the required findings for approval can be made. And the Planning Commission recommends the city council adopt the five findings of fact and introduce for first reading an ordinance approving each DA amendment. And that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions.
Does the council have any questions?
No.
Councilman Albert.
So, I wonder if you could talk just a little bit about the parking issues, because I know a few concerns are going to, you know, we've had apartments that have had major parking issues in the neighborhoods around them. So, could you discuss a little bit about if this, if you expect this to be an issue or not, and why?
I think you're correct, and we've had other projects with density bonuses that have had some parking issues in the past. State law really only allows us to require half a space per unit when you have an affordable project. And in addition, when a senior project is proposed, there's the same requirement there. So, we're really kind of limited in what we can require. I know in some cases, we've been able to go back and add additional parking spaces for the Sienna Apartments out in the West Roseville. So, we're always kind of monitoring that, but unfortunately, we're kind of limited in what we can require of a project.
The good news with FD-34 is that it is a senior affordable project, which typically anecdotally requires less parking. People have fewer vehicles. We tend to see less parking issues in the age-restricted projects than we do other affordable projects.
Does this have the minimum requirements, or does it have any extra?
Right now, we don't have a project before us. This is merely just transferring the units from WB-31 to FD-34. So, once we do have a project, we would be able to look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
What's the size of parcel FD-34? What's the acreage? Sorry, we should know the answer to my own question, but-
None of us have that committed to memory.
Let's see here.
We really have a, state law has been pretty aggressive on taking away local control. We really have, we have a lot of control over these density bonuses?
A lot of control over density bonuses? No.
Okay.
Quite simply, yeah, the state has taken away the majority of local discretion when it comes to density bonus. There are very stringent findings that you'd have to make in order to not allow or disallow a density bonus, health and safety-type implications, things like not having sewer capacity or things of that nature.
And do we have a similar project to this in the city somewhere?
We have senior affordable projects all over the city. There's one in the Village Center, for example. They're scattered all over, really.
Okay. So, while the residents might not have, they might not take up a lot of parking spaces. Grandkids might, well, not the grandkids, but, you know.
Most of these apartments are obviously age-restricted, so, yeah, it would just be senior citizens living there for the most part.
Okay. Those were my questions. I'll open for public comment, and Jason Claprot? I'm giving you a-
Applicant first.
The applicant, we'll have the applicant first. I'm sorry. Let's, Jason, let the applicant come first.
I'm Scott Cannell, the developer of this project and many others throughout Roseville. I'm very happy to be here. We're at 70 degrees, because when I left Chicago this morning, it was snowing.
Just wait around, it'll happen.
Maybe. Hopefully not here. Although we don't have a specific project in front of you, I do want to answer your question and tell you that the way we have designed this project internally for ourselves, we have the same requirement that you would have for something that wasn't an affordable project, but was elderly. We have one parking space per unit plus 10% overage. So, we were very careful to do that. Because we're going to be owning it for 50 years, we want to make sure that it's the best community that it can possibly be. I wanted to just give my tremendous thanks to Kenny Shallow for, again, doing a phenomenal job under a very tight timeframe, and to Mike Isom and Derek Ogden and Greg Bitter. I've said this many times to council, but I really mean it. You have probably the most committed, attentive, and technically competent planning staff that my organization has worked with anywhere in the country, and that's why we keep coming back and buying more land and developing more land in Roseville. The reason for this project right now, and the reason why what your staff did is so incredible, I don't think any other city in California could have done this. This year, because financial conditions are so tight, there is a belief that there's going to be additional volume cap available from SIDLAC to do tax-exempt bonds.
What's that acronym?
SIDLAC. So, it's the California Debt Limit Allocation Committee. So, when you get the volume cap, you also get with it low-income housing tax credits that don't affect the state of California. They only affect the federal government. And so, this was originally on our radar screen to develop in like 2032, but because of the market conditions, we thought this is our best shot. And this is such an important project for the City of Roseville in really building the, what you need to build to meet your RENA requirements, so many 256 very-low income units and an additional 46 low-income units, that we decided to take our best shot. And as I said, that, this would not be possible without the tremendous work that Kenny has just done. Now, we have everything buttoned up, and when we make our filing with the state in the next three weeks, our filing's going to be perfect. So, I thank you very much and look forward to being able to build this project. Hopefully, we'll get our allocation.
Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant? Okay. We'll open for public comment. Jason, pronounce your last name.
Claprot.
Okay.
That gives me a bye on messing your name up in the future. I was thinking about it, standing there, and somebody else got applauded for getting it right, and I said, "I'm going to get it wrong," but he's going to get me wrong, so we're on level ground. My name is Jason Claprot, and I am a low-income success story. And by that, I mean that I was a single father, went back to school, lived in low-income housing, and made my way until just recently, in August of last month, became a homeowner in Roseville. I moved to Roseville because I needed stronger schools. From, I've lived in Plaster County. I saw what is happening in Auburn. I said, "There's got to be a better way." And since I'm a teacher, education's very important to me. And so, I moved down for the schools, and I fell in love with the vision. And part of that has to do with when I reached out with an email letter, that the very next day, Mayor, who does shit?
Haldeshel.
Haldeshel, we're even. So, responded with a text message to me, and I was able to actually communicate with him over the phone, to which he advised me, "Well, you know, we've worked with the builder in the past, and go by and see some one of his other properties," which I did. You know, in that conversation, also, there was a mention that Roseville is pushing back on the state on the number of high-density residencies. And in this proposal, I see that maybe the number of them is being pushed back against, but what they contain is a little difference. So, when I moved into the city, I did a ton of research, as I'm sure that you ran into people that ended up on the wrong side of Earl Rush and are not in the Roseville School District. Knew I was right on the border, and I knew I was okay. Had a difficult time finding information on the FD-34 property. In fact, if you go onto the website, there's still a Roseville 2025 map that says that it's public, quasi-public. And so, it's really difficult to get that information. The piece of land there is actually, it's a seven-acre plot, and the initial plan was to put 172 units there, which fell between the 2010 recommendations of 13 and 30 high-density residencies. I believe it was about 24. Between now and then, that number has gone and been approved to the 256, which goes above the 30 to 30-point-something, I can't remember. But now, this 302 units would push it way beyond to 43.1% residency. So, that not only is well beyond what the 2010 survey that was done in the city proposed, but it's also twice of the city, the area that I went and viewed. And if I were to ask anybody, would they love their house if I told you I was going to cut it in half? They probably wouldn't. And so, when I went in there, I, you know, expected to see, you know, buildings that were high. I saw buildings that were three, and even- that were high. I saw buildings that were three and even four stories, which kind of scared me. And, and coming from that, being able to be in low income housing, there was two things that I think that were very important. The first of which was that it was managed well. And the second of which, when the properties that I stayed in that were efficient, was that there was a credit score that was considered into who moved in. A couple of my things have been eliminated. One of my questions was about the ownership and it sounds like they're invested for 50 years, which is awesome to hear. Distance to school, the fact that it's a senior center, probably not important, but those are, just if we looked at it, the elementary school is 5.2 miles away and the high school would be 5.5 miles away. One of the things that is problematic is if there isn't a lot of cars there, there's something called a walkability scale. And this is, I found information both in Zillow and in WalkScore.com. For my house, which is within the 300 feet of that property, except where I could get the information, they give a walkability score of zero out of 100. A transit score, Zillow gives a zero. The walk score gives a 12 out of zero. So it's not an easy place to get around. When I first moved to Roseville, one time, quick story, forgot money, my wallet, tried to buy milk. The lady, I bought a bunch of stuff and all I needed was milk. And they said, are you going to come back for your stuff? And I said, no, it's too far away for me to come back. And that's just the reality of living in Roseville that I've accepted. The closest shopping center currently is the Rayleigh's One, which is 2.3 miles away. If someone doesn't have a car, that's quite a haul. If someone's low budget, shopping at Rayleigh's One's probably not the best suited thing for them. The last concerns that I have deal with the, the narrowness of Earl Rest Drive, which would be one border of the property. Right now, there is sidewalks where many people walk. And then there's bike lanes, which I regularly, as long, along with other people that drive there, pull their car into the bike lane in order to pass two cars. And the last concern that I have, and I know my time's running out, is the building height and what that would look like. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for, thank you for your public comment. Anyone else have a public comment? All right. I will close public comment, close the public hearing. Anything staff would like to address about anything else before?
The only thing I'll mention is that we've, we've said a couple of times tonight that there's no specific development proposal on the property at this time. We encourage residents that are interested in participating in that process. It'll probably go through our objective design standards.
Would you say that again?
Affordable projects can be approved ministerially, which means there's no discretion on the council or planning commission's part in approving it. We make efforts to notify the applicable neighborhood association that those projects are going in. But to just be monitoring the Arkona website, be in touch with Arkona, and by any means, feel free to contact planning staff at any time to see what's happening with that parcel. And we'll be happy to provide information.
Great. All right. Does the council have any other comments or questions?
I do. I wanted to ask on the walkability scores that were mentioned, is that based on current attributes in the community? Because we know that area is going to be getting more commercial and stuff. Is that based on, because we don't have any yet out there?
Yeah, I think that's safe to say. And we were just looking at the land use map. There are commercial sites within, under a half mile from, from this site, both to the, to the west and then the commercial site at Pleasant Grove and Westbrook to the north. It does tie in with the trail system and the open space. So it, and keep in mind that this parcel is already, it already has high density land use. So I mean, it's, that ship has sailed. But it, it's right in the center of the specific plan. It, it will be surrounded by, or will have approximate access to, to commercial uses and other things that residents would, would be able to enjoy.
And then a comment that I'll add here, and mostly for my neighbor who spoke. The developer, we heard him here on film, on tape, and it's permanent. And he's very good about keeping his word with things. And I have found him very easy to work with, with the community. And so if we pass this tonight, I would say you're, we're lucky it's him out there. And I hope you stay in touch with him. So that's it.
Any other comments or questions? Mike, what were you looking at there?
On the, we were looking at the land, or the land use map.
Right. And we have an app that you can go and look at what the land use is?
We have, we have an interactive tool that's available on the city's website that will allow you to explore various parcels, zoning, land use and other attributes, look at where bike trails are, fire, fire stations, things like that. It's an interactive GIS tool.
Okay. And so when the comment was made about 2010?
2025.
Would that have been on that, that website? What's that?
2025. Well, I don't, I don't know. There, there are maps floating in the ether that, that may be obsolete at this point, but everything on the website should be up to date. I, I can't speak to.
I think that's important.
What Google came up with.
All right. With that, unless there's anything else, I'll secrete, read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 9.1, the city council will consider adopting the five findings of fact and introducing for a first reading an ordinance adopting a seventh amendment of the development agreement by and between the city of Roseville and West Park Sierra Vista LLC as a signee of West Park Federico LLC, Morier Investments LLC, and Federico Tyler Family Limited Partnership relative to the Sierra Vista specific plan and authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the city of Roseville and adopting the five findings of fact and introducing for a first reading an ordinance adopting a fourth amendment of the development agreement by and between the city of Roseville and West Park SV 400 LLC relative to Sierra Vista specific plan and authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the city of Roseville. With that, Mr. Mayor, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Madonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haddish.
Yes.
Thank you for your presentation. All right. Our next public, I'm going to open the next public hearing. We have a Housing Authority FY 2024 25 Annual Plan. Susie Cook Turner and Wayne Wiley from the Economic Development Department.
Good afternoon, Mayor Haddish, members of the council. Again, Wayne Wiley, Economic Development Manager with the city of Roseville, and happy to introduce to you Susie Cook Turner, our Housing Supervisor, who will be given the presentation tonight. And so with that, I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you, Wayne. Good evening, members of the Housing Authority Board. I am the Housing Supervisor with Roseville Housing Authority. And tonight, I will be presenting the Housing Authority's annual plan for fiscal year 2024-2025. All housing authorities must submit an agency plan. This includes a five-year plan and an annual plan. Our annual plan follows the progression of the five-year plan submitted to HUD in 2020. Roseville Housing Authority's annual plan is due to HUD each year by April 15. The draft annual plan is required to have a 45-day public comment period, which was noticed on February 16, 2024, and closes tonight, April 3. Two-day staff has not received any comments regarding this item. Roseville Housing Authority's five-year plan goals are shown here. We continually apply for additional vouchers in order to expand the supply of assisted housing. RHA applied for additional HUD VAS vouchers, which provides rental subsidy for homeless veterans. We were awarded 15 new vouchers this month, bringing our total VAS voucher count to 100 vouchers. In order to improve the quality of assisted housing, RHA awarded project-based vouchers, or PBVs, to several developers who are building or in the planning stages of building brand-new units in Roseville. Eight PBV vouchers were awarded to each new development site. We have eight that are coming online and will be available for lease within the next month or so. We have also awarded eight PBV vouchers to Sun Rose Apartments, who will renovate existing units, three of which will be VAS project-based units, ensuring that three veteran families will not only receive wraparound services, but will no longer experience homelessness. RHA continues to collaborate with the Housing Division and reserve funds to provide legal services through Project Sentinel for those experiencing housing discrimination. In 2023, senior staff began attending affirmatively furthering fair housing webinars presented by HDC to help us identify and overcome impediments to fair housing and to come up with a plan to present to HUD. There is no due date as of yet for this plan. Lastly, RHA regularly collaborates with Northern California housing authorities, including Placer County Housing Authority, to optimize administration of the various voucher programs, as well as the family self-sufficiency program. RHA collaborated with Placer County Housing Authority in attending a VAS boot camp in Los Angeles to help improve the process, the communication and barriers between public housing authorities and the VA, who refer and case manage our VAS veterans. RHA also collaborates with Placer County Housing Authority with our FSS programs. Roseville Housing Authority has a leasing percentage of 98.63%, compared to the national average of 85.55%. HUD has been impressed with the level of leasing that RHA has been able to achieve. We believe a big part of the high leasing numbers can be attributed to the landlord incentive program that was instituted early last year. Our 30 project-based units at Main Street and Annex on Main have maintained 100% leasing percentage since opening in 2021. For 2024-2025, RHA plans to continue to maintain high leasing numbers and continue to offer incentives to attract new landlords to the program, along with looking for grant opportunities to continue to fund the program. The landlord incentive program continues to be successful in attracting new owners to the voucher program. Since its inception, Roseville Housing Authority has been able to enter into housing assistant payment contracts with 34 new owners. We have paid $115,000 in incentives and housed 109 families. RHA is proud to announce that we have been able to maintain our high performer status for the 18th year. And for RHA to be in compliance with the Housing Choice Voucher Program regulations, the lease up rate for each calendar year cannot exceed 100% of its allocation of vouchers per voucher type, while expending no more than our annual budget allocation for that program. We did go into a shortfall situation for a few months, which in the end helped to increase our budget funding from HUD. Last month, on March 11, Roseville Housing Authority opened a project-based vouchers waiting list to accept pre-applications. The list closed on March 22, and we received over 3,300 applications. This list will be used to fill eight brand-new project-based units that will be available for lease later this year, with an additional 30-plus units scheduled to come online in 2025. The waiting list will also be used to fill project-based vacancies when a tenant vacates a PBV unit. It has also been another successful year for Roseville Housing Authority's family self-sufficiency program, which saw four families graduate from the program with over $33,000 in escrow funds. So tonight, we are recommending that the Housing Authority Board receive public comment on this item and adopt the resolution authorizing the submittal of the fiscal year 2024-2025, that's wrong up there, annual plan to HUD. This concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Council questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
You're talking about the vouchers. How, if, if a person received a voucher today and was successful to get into housing, how long is that voucher good for?
The voucher is good until they are no longer eligible for it. As long as they continue to qualify for it, we do a yearly recertification where we check your income and your assets and your household composition to make sure that you still qualify. Participants are also required to report any changes in income within 14 days to the Housing Authority. If they are deemed over income, which means they are now paying all of their rent, they stay on the program for six months as kind of a safety net to make sure that nothing in the household changes. If nothing in the household changes, they transition off of the program. If there is a change, someone gets injured, loses their job, if we're paying $1 of their rent, then they stay on the program.
How, how long has been the longest person, our longest family, about? Just a best guess?
I, I, we've had some people on there that have been on there a long time that have raised their kids on, on the, the subsidy.
In their apartment.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I'll open up for public comment. I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council if there are any, not any other comments. Wait, got to close the public hearing. And then if there are no other comments or questions, I'll have the clerk read the motion.
On item 9.3, the Housing Authority will consider adopting Resolution Number 2-24, Housing Authority of the City of Roseville, and approving the fiscal year 2024-25 annual plan. May I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Chair Bernusconi.
Yes.
Sorty Member Albert.
Yes.
Sorty Member Madonza.
Yes.
Sorty Member Rucucci.
Yes.
And Chair Haddish.
Yes. We got different names that time, different titles. Thanks for your presentation. This will be the opportunity for a second public comment on non-agend items. Okay. Close that. Ask the city manager if he has anything else for this.
No further reports, Mayor. Thank you.
City attorney?
Nothing from me. Thank you.
Great. All right. I'll start it with Councilwoman Rucucci. You want to, anything you want to report on?
Thank you. Let's see. My Placer Flood Control and Water Conservation meeting for April was canceled, and so there'll be another one here in May. Meetings I did attend was Northern California Power Association. And their discussion this week was on the budget, like many other organizations, and looking at some of their plants. One was a geothermal plant, which is their geyser plant, which is close to Heelsburg, and looking at refurbishments and costs for that. And also, with NCPA, there's, we have hydro relicensing time for their plant that they manage in, in Murphy's. So working with Collier-Viral Power, Power in Calveras County, their water district. So looking to work together and, and start doing a relicensing project because for, for hydro plants, for reservoirs, it takes, you know, it takes, it's, the plant, the license usually is good for about 40 or 50 years. But to work on it, to even get one, it takes many, many years and a lot of money. So they're going to start, be working on that soon. Also, one other thing with NCPA, because I don't think I mentioned this before, one of our, one of our participants is a low di, and they have a low di energy center, and it with natural gas, but they're also working to see if they can make it green hydrogen. And so I have it run by hydrogen. So they've been working on different grounds and have been pretty successful. But it's, it takes a while. It's, 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 it's new, but it's been studied in other countries also. So that's something that continues to go on. And here locally, this weekend, we're going to have our, our Environmental Utilities Exploration Center is going to, is reopening after two-year of remodeling there at, next to Martha Riley's Library in Mahaney Park. So that should be real exciting. Here this Saturday, around 10:15, it's going to have a ribbon cutting and, and seeing a lot of new exciting things that are occurring. And then one other thing, April 13 to 17, there's what they call capital-to-capital trip, capital from Sacramento capital area, the region, to going to the Washington DC on many issues that affect Roseville, Placer County, and our whole region with Sacramento and, and, and others. And many of the council members will be going on it and along with others, electeds, and, and also people who are special, are specialized in fields of, electeds, and, and also people who are specialized in fields of, like water, electricity, and economic development. I plan to attend, and I'll be doing, I'll be on a water committee and going back there. That's it, Mayor.
Thanks. Councilmember Mendoza.
Thank you, Mayor. One of my council assignments is to sit on the ARPAL board, the Roseville Police Athletic League. And we met yesterday, so this is fresh in my mind. We didn't discuss a lot specific to Roseville, but there are a few things that I do want to mention to the public. As mentioned earlier, there is a fundraiser going on till another hour and 15 minutes over at Old Town Pizza tonight. 15% of the proceeds are going back to ARPAL and the Me One Foundation. So if you can't get out there tonight, there's also another one coming up at Bounty Hunters, right across the street here on April 17. Again, those proceeds are going to assist ARPAL. And just one more item of note, there's a Top Golf Tournament coming up on Friday, April 26, from 10 to 1. There are still some spots available. If you want to grab your team and go out there and have a good time on a Friday, I encourage you to go on the website, sign up for that golf tournament over at Top Golf. Again, those proceeds go back to ARPAL, and we do a lot of good with that money and help our youth here in the community. Thank you very much.
All right. Councilman Albert.
This Friday, the Sacramento Air Basin, that's an air quality board, is going to be coming to Placer County, and so we'll be meeting up in Auburn. And as mentioned, we're starting to gear up for the cap-to-cap. I'm on the economic development team. We had our meeting this week, our second strategy meeting down at the California Mobility Center. And that's the first I've actually been at the, the building down there. That was interesting. And I think this will be a pretty successful cap-to-caps. It's like there's a lot of really good topics that we're going to be all advocating for, for our region. I dropped in on the FD51 Park Design Meeting. I think our Parks and Rec Department does a really good job working with the community on park designs, and they, you know, the budget was limited on this one. It's a very small park, but trying to hear and, and put in as many elements as possible. And I always enjoy meeting neighbors at those. Attended a couple Easter events, even in the rain, and I just thought it was really fun watching the community get together and just enjoy each other's company. It's, it's such a wonderful place to live, and I think our communities, getting together at events like this, it just helps undermine, or underline how nice it is to be so collaborative and friendly. And then likewise, attended the Westbrook Elementary School Open House event that they had, and visited with several families that many of them had just moved here last few years, and they just couldn't talk enough about how much they love the school and the neighborhood they live in. And that's about it. Just makes me proud to be a Roseville resident.
Thank you, Councilman Albert. Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
One of my committee assignments is being a board member for the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, and I meet with our executive director this Friday, and as well, I've been asked to be a panelist speaker at the Engaged Forum, which everyone is invited to attend. I believe that's April-
April 11, is it?
I thought it was April 12.
Okay.
Thursday.
I think it's Friday.
At Randy Peters Catering in, in the afternoon. And I've been asked to be a speaker at the, one of our local high schools for the voter outreach program. And so I would imagine that you'll probably all have emails to do the same. They took a hiatus for a couple years, but they're back, and it's a great opportunity to speak with high school seniors who will soon be voting. And that's all I have for this evening. I know our next meeting is canceled due to travel to cap-to-cap, so our next meeting is in May.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. I'll pick up on that. I'm going to do Wood Creek High School for the voter outreach. Really an honor and a pleasure to talk to new, new and aspiring voters, so that, that's good. Since our last meeting, the SECOG Board of Directors met in Woodland. They always start with a bit of a tour, and it's an opportunity for the Board of Directors from the Six County region to get a deep dive into, into other jurisdictions. It was, we started with an AgStart tour, which was near and dear to my heart, since I worked with agriculture. And then we had the Board of Directors meeting. The next day was the Sun City Leadership Graduation. That was, that was, that's, that's always just, you know, meeting those leaders in the community, whether it's on Arcona or in a, in a neighbor, I mean, homeowners association like Sun City is always a treat. We've had public work briefings on the Advanced Clean Fleet Rule, you know, Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, which I'm the vice chair on, and the South Placer Transportation Planning, South Placer Regional Transportation Agency, which I'm the vice chair on, have met. Tomorrow's the SECOG Transportation Committee. I got a theme going here. And then on April 11, the City of Roseville is doing its Transportation 360 Open House, and an opportunity for public comment on that. You know, one of the other, besides, besides the daisies this evening, which was a terrific way to start the evening, is, you know, going out to various ribbon cuttings that the Chamber has. And I had an opportunity to go to Sunshine Audiology and meet a third-generation Rosevillian, Tracy Volkman, who just spoke glowingly about the community. She's right down there on, on Douglas at where Oak connects in there, and they just opened their business. And then yesterday, or Monday, the days are running together, Noel Flynn Gallery across the street had their ribbon cutting. They must have had 60 to 80 people there. And it is, as we've all experienced, when you get out in the community and you're available, you know, you really hear how much, you know, residents of the community appreciate it. You have an opportunity to dialogue with them and share with them your perspective, most importantly, to hear their perspective as well. April's an important month in the City of Roseville's history. So here is our history for, for April. On April 9, 115 years ago, on April 9, the City of Roseville became the City of Roseville. So we're, I don't know how many generations that is, but, and then later in April, 160 years ago, the, I'm going to get the name, I always get the name of this right. It's now Union Pacific, but the, the westward expansion, or the eastward expansion of the Transcontinental Railroad made it to Roseville in April of 1864. 160 years ago. So I think we should designate April as Roseville History Month. Anyway, with that, we will, as the vice mayor said, we will not have an April 17 meeting, and we'll be adjourned to our next meeting on May 1. And thank you, everyone, for watching and participating. And we are adjourned.